Morning, everybody, and welcome. First order of business is the agenda.
I'm going to move to accept the agenda as presented, seconded.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is public comment. Is anyone here to take advantage of this time? Anybody online? Okay, next up is meeting minutes.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the June 6, 2023 Commissioners' Regular Meeting as presented. Seconded.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you're unanimous. Airport easement acquisition.
Can you fix that? There it is.
Yeah. Well, yeah, good morning. So this is actually just a informational, really. They're, um, they're working towards the easement acquisitions. And the company that's doing the, um, I'll get it in a minute. The estimating, the, all of the negotiations with the landowners reached out to Rudman Winchell to do the legal work. So we just wanted to bring it up that, you know, they can see if there was any conflict with them using Rudman and Winchell to do the legal work. They're not doing any negotiations. They're just doing the, the deeds and the closings.
Representing the county.
Representing, representing the, um, the company that's, that's working with Jacobs. On behalf of Jacobs, yeah.
So, so the question was, is there, is, would they be conflicted out?
Right.
I, I personally don't see any conflict there. They're working on behalf of the county. I mean, the contractor is working on behalf of the county.
This is Rudman, Rudman Winchell knows better than we do whether there's a conflict.
Yeah.
They wouldn't take it if they knew there was a conflict.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see it.
And they reached out to Michael. That's how we, uh, we found out about it. They reached out to Michael.
Michael, do you see anything?
No, we didn't. Both of us talked about it and I spoke with them. I don't envision any issue.
Do you want some action from us?
We just need to relay back to them that we discussed it with you and you were okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that's consensus here. Okay, thank you, Leroy. Anything else to add?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Ready to move on? Michael?
Yeah.
Okay, next up is jail request approval to promote Angela Hall for part-time.
Do you buy that, UT?
I did. Sorry, I got anxious there. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just a minute, uh, I'm wondering though, that's all you have, all right?
Yeah.
Why don't we take ten minutes? Because this could be a lengthy discussion.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
I'm going to move to approve the advancement of Angela Hall from part-time to full-time corrections officer effective June 24, 2023 with full benefits at pay grade nine C. Seconded.
Moved in seconded, Tim, you have anything to add?
She's nine C. Last week she completed the maker of justice category.
And that's a very objective process, but still, they're too involved in that nine C recommendation.
Um, Tim, I emailed and talked.
Okay, and you're okay with nine C?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Nothing else to add? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, UT, sorry about that. Uh, discussion, Swift Current, Swift Current Energy Representatives Regarding TIP for the Three Rivers Solar Project.
Yes, please. Is Miller on this one?
I don't see him so far. We haven't heard of him.
Good morning. How do we reason about you? We have here been, uh, three state solar projects and some of the people. I'm Alec Jarvis, uh, by Red Development, current manager. Uh, and help with all of our greenfield development, solar and storage. And, uh, here's the other folks. I'm Matt Sapien also, that took our energy development.
And I'm Phil Sossier, I'm attorney with Bernstein Sure, and I work on municipal and, and tax increment financing matters, working with the company.
So I'll give you, what I wanted to do is give an update on the project. And I believe Dave Bower, um, was here in front of you maybe with, a year and a half?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Prior to me.
Prior to, prior to you, that's right. Um, and since that time, Dave was developing the project. We were, you know, we were developing, putting all the pieces together, very similar to Bull Hill, um, as far as the development process, right? Um, needing to secure the land, get the permits in place. Um, so I can, where we are today for, for the Three Rivers project, which is 100 megawatt solar, is, it's fully permitted. Um, we, uh, we are negotiating the interconnection agreement. We're just about done with that with Versant and ICE in New England. So by the end of this month, the, it's the large generator interconnection agreement should be in place. Um, so there's a couple of key pieces, obviously, you need to be able to, uh, to start construction, to, to finance the project. Uh, one of those being the permit, the other the interconnection. We have a power purchase agreement for the, for the project as well, the sale, uh, sell of renewable energy credits in our electricity. Um, so the other, one of the other big pieces we're working on is, uh, procurement of all of the equipment. So the racking, the panels, uh, that should be complete this summer. Uh, and then on top of that, we're in discussions, we've done a, an RFP for, to construct the project for the EPC contract, contractor to do the work. And so that's nearing completion. So we're putting, you know, we're, we're getting to that, that point where all of our, you know, our costs are known, our schedule with the, for interconnection and construction, we're, we're refining that. Uh, and given that, we wanted to come back to the commissioners and let you know that we're, you know, that we're looking towards, um, construction like in earnest, the beginning and string time of next year. Uh, so the, the bulk of this year will really be dedicated to, uh, the final engineering of substation, all the, all the rest of the components of the project. So that, and that's under the scope of the EPC contractor that gets awarded to do the work. Um, and given that, we wanted to come back and, and pick back up a conversation about the, the tip, possible tip, uh, and then provide whatever information that the commissioners would need. And, you know, that was, I've reached out to start this discussion, you know, a few weeks ago, given, given the maturity of the, of the project. So wanted to sort of start with that as far as the basis of the conversation and then answer questions.
We were given a tour by Dwayne, what, three, four years ago, wasn't it, John?
Yeah.
Uh, anyways, has the location changed?
No, we, we've got some maps, we can, yeah, we, we can leave these behind for you. Uh, it really shows, it would, you, you know where this is, but it kind of shows, uh, the current configuration. It's really, uh, if you've seen the work that they did to clear, um, I think that was probably a year and a half ago. Uh, and I think the Jordan brothers did jury of that work.
At the time, we were de-rocking it for blueberries, but that, that's the lot now that, they, they've said changed that for this project.
Exactly. And so one, there's a, a tax map parcel there. So I wanted to show a couple of different versions. You could see which tax path, tax map the project sits on, where it sits in relation to, uh, Bull Hill and Hancock Wind Farm. So it's right next door. So they, we'll see the, I can use a prototype. But this is showing you where it is exactly, right? In relation to the transmission line in your project. So that's just, this one just shows, I think we have listed the tax parcel to see in the aerial photo. And you have that.
One more.
Yep. This one shows the actual footprint of the, of the project. And if you match that up with the aerial photo, it's pretty, pretty obvious it's where, where, where it's been compared. Um, and so this last one shows really all the shaded area is where all the panels will be. And it's sort of, there's areas where not, you know, proposing panels because of producing like impact slopes, that sort of thing. It's a pretty good idea. You know, this area pretty well. So this just gives you a sense of this is about 100 megawatts of solar. Uh, this is where the, and it matches up pretty well, right? The, the already had existing blueberries. And then right alongside the transition. There's project components on either side.
I recall when we met with the, the way, and then downstairs, the transmission line was one of the biggest factors that you have to deal with to solve that, the transmission now.
Yeah, that's where, so it has been a long, long road. That's part of the, takes so long, right? Is you have to go through the, the interconnection process. Um, so they have to study us and everybody else on the line. You know, there's another, yeah, there's another wind farm being proposed as well down the line. You already have, it's a Bull Hill Hancock, and I think we were hooked into this line as well, if I'm not mistaken. So, but yes, we've gone through, they have to study us as proposed. So we propose 100 megawatts and then what are the potential opportunities that are needed because of our injection of that power? And so that, we're at the tail, we're, those studies are done, we know what's, what the upgrades are or aren't. And the, the conclusion of that interconnection agreement basically means we're going to be able to move forward to procure the equipment, to transformers and breakers and everything. So after the end of this month, we'll have that agreement where, okay, we could put the order in for all of that equipment for the substation. And we know what the, what the schedule is from Versant for the out, because we need an outage, right? And that'll be, I think it's spring of, of next year. So we have to coordinate with Versant so that, you know, it wouldn't be tied into the line, that that's, you know, approved outage during, maybe a certain window to do what we need to do while that, while we break the line.
How many panels we talked about? Hey, Chuck, how you doing?
All right. That's a, that's a great question. Um, I get back, I'm just curious.
Because I see broken up the areas, it's not one continuous piece of property, it's, it's different.
Right, because that's the avoidance of, but really it's all related to permitting, right? Because we've got to show how we are going to avoid and minimize impacts to wetlands and other species. So that's, and a little bit of, of, of topography as well, right? If there's too much slopes, so, you know, this, the end result is that, you know, the different blobs, right? Of what we can fit in, uh, into that area. That's why it's broken up. You have these other environmental industries.
Well, just looking at this, the wet ones aren't delineated on here, but just looking at this, you can sort of see where they're being.
Is the roads had delineated on any of these existing roads now? Was that a broken one?
These are the, let's see if you can line it up. But these, this shows the, some of these are interior right now. You can see them on the, on the aerial here.
Yeah, obviously.
Yeah, and then you can see that's existing, existing, which makes sense, right? On how to get, get to these, these other blocks. And I think we showed the same thing going across the transmission line down here as well.
So you're coming in from 16 over here and going down to one of these places?
There's two different access points, right? Um, I think the, so one of the airline, that's going to be a conversation with the EPC contractors. And I think we've seen the majority of the kind, the traffic for the wind farms coming from the north, right? Yeah, I think that's, those are conversations that will, as far as, do we need another lay down area? Um, that might be offsite. So, but I think the easiest approach for a lot of the equipment is from off of.
Eastbound?
Yeah.
Or up nine?
Yeah.
You have to find a cell filled in.
Right, right. It's just harder to, to, to get there. I, I think the reality will be that they'll come from both directions. It depends what's, you know, who's coming and for what purpose, right? And we don't, unlike the wind, like wind farm, we don't, we don't need a whole lot of green here. You need, right? So like temporary fast plants aren't something that we typically need, um, for projects like this. A lot of it, a lot more labor, uh, than you might see on a wind farm, right? I can get back to you the number of panels.
Oh, I, I just, I'm just, I'm just curious more than anything.
Yeah, it's going to be, you know, in, I think, maybe just quote here, 100,000 panels. So what it's, I'll get, I'll come back with it. We know what that number is, I just don't know.
So who's the principals in Three Rivers? Who's the principal?
Yeah, so I work for Swift Current Energy. Um, we're based out of Boston, we've got a yard with office, I, I'm in Scarborough, Maine. We've got an office in Texas.
Okay, so Dwayne, Dwayne and, uh, Dave.
Yeah.
They basically, this was that concept, that they kind of saw the whole concept of.
Yeah, Dave still has ownership in it, right? But it's, this will be built, is contracted, owned and operated by Swift Current Energy. Right? We've got another, one other project in green that's, uh, about the same size, down near Turner. Um, our footprint, we have a big footprint in Illinois, Mississippi, Arkansas, and so, uh, and big in Pennsylvania as well. Um, but just the two, and all of our projects are about this size or bigger. We've got, uh, one in Illinois that's with the, kind of contract with the city of Chicago, 600 megawatts. So that's, that's one of the biggest to be built right now, that's solar as well. Uh, but yeah, this is, the, the model for it to occur is to develop, permit, that's my job, right? Is to, to put these pieces together so we can construct them and then our group own and operate them.
Bill, TIF, we got us to that and whatnot. We, none of the three of us were here when the TIFs were negotiated with Bull Hill and, and, uh, yeah. So we're unfamiliar with that whole process. I do know that, uh, the county was represented by an attorney back then. And, uh, so, of course, we're very interested in TIF and of course community benefits, uh, accounts. So, but we don't know how to proceed with that. So perhaps you could, I know you're coming from one perspective, but maybe you could, yeah, give us, give us a hand with.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, you can mark it. Now, the only, uh, last point I'll say is that, uh, I've worked with Bernstein Sure in the past on tips on a majority win. So being of the Bigum Project and Oakfield, there's the county, so very familiar with both, you know, current enhancement agreements and community benefit agreements and, and tips as well, so.
Did you have any idea who the county might retain for Bull Hill or?
Um, well, so I worked with Steven Wagner, who, uh, is who I spoke to last time we were here. I can't remember, that was two, three years ago, type of the same project. Um, and Steven was involved, and I've worked with Steven on a number of tips. Um, so I know Steven fairly well. I contacted him before this meeting to let him know about it. Um, and, you know, I've both been on both sides of TIPS before. So that's who I worked with. I think he was generally familiar with this project, uh, from a couple of years ago.
Bill, can you have his name again?
Sure, uh, Steve Wagner, Steven Wagner over at Rudman Winchell. He's a municipal attorney over, over there. We've worked together, including on accounting tip, uh, and other county. So yeah, so just, just take a step back and maybe a five-minute overview of TIPS. And I, and I represent both public entities and private entities, um, um, chair of our municipal department. Is, uh, a tip is really an economic development tool, it's one of the few economic development tools that municipalities, counties have under the tax laws. And the concept behind it is that when there's an increase in assessed value because of new products coming onboard, um, in this, in this case, a county can use a tip district to help incentivize that project to the extent municipality or county is interested in economic development, incentivize it and essentially capture any of that increased revenue that will come out of the increased assessed value of the project. So if you think about it, before a project goes in, let's just use, uh, easy numbers, it's worth $100,000 in taxable value. Someone's about to put a lot of money into it, right? So you're going to increase that, that, uh, the assessed value of that property significantly. And particularly as it relates to municipalities, but also counties, that will have an impact on your overall assessed value, which will then affect how, how various benefits come in and out. So the easy way to think about it from a municipality perspective is that there's state subsidies that will go down when your value goes up. Um, you are the county, but if you're municipality, your taxes will go up. Um, as a municipality, if your assessed value goes down, goes up. And then there's, uh, state revenue sharing and, and, uh, that also is impacted by your valuation. So when you put a TIP district around that area, you're actually shielding it from your assessed value. That's the idea. So it's as if it doesn't exist for purposes of those taxship benefits or tax shifts. Um, and it's, so it's a set aside. And then the taxes there derive from that increase against all the increments. So you're starting above the 100,000 I started. All those taxes then get put into a special account and you can use them for limited purposes under the statute or specific purposes, I should say. There's a list of types of projects you can use it for. You can't use it to start your general fund, but you can use it for various economic development projects.
And that's, that, those right there, uh, set up by agreement or by statute?
So, by, yeah, both. So the TIF itself is actually the county's decision. So you create the TIF, and I'll, I'll talk about the process here in a second. But you create a TIP district, and then you have to create a development program, which is essentially a narrative around that. Why you're doing it, what do you want to do with it?
But the limitations on that, on that is set by some regulations.
Set by state law, that's right.
By state law.
And so there are some limits on it. You can't do more than 5% of your area. There's some, it really wouldn't come into play in a large area like, you know, unorganized territories. But you're, you can't tip your whole area, for example, there are, there are limitations.
Just a second, while we talk about the county though.
Yeah.
In the unorganized territories, what, uh, state collects the taxes?
That's right.
And we're just by statute assigned and managed that by services in the area, ring us. So how does the county get the revenue from that if the state is the taxpayer?
It's a good question. So it's, it's, it is unique. It's a little different. The benefit to a county with a, with a tip is that you're essentially getting these TIP funds that you would not normally get. In other words, you go into a large pot, right? The county, the state tax assessor for the UT Division of MRS taxes. And then re, and then essentially sends you part of the reimbursement of revenue. When you're, when a county does a tip, you're actually capturing all the taxes that will be going on that increased assessed value. And that will be set aside by MRS as a special account for you, essentially over beyond what you would be, what you would be getting.
So is it with a statute that provided for that?
That's right.
I can see the states say, wait a minute, that's ours. I mean, we tax that, that's our, it's our revenue, which it is.
So it is allowed, um, in a number, a number of counties that have, uh, set up TIP districts in their unorganized territories. And that's, so that's the way it would work. You, you would, you would sit, decide what part of the unorganized territories you want to put into the TIP district. You decide how much you want to capture it. Typically, it's 100%, in other words, of that increment. So say it goes up to $10 million from that 100,000 base. You could capture all of that increased assessed value if you wanted it in the district. And then the taxes on that, on that $10 million is what we call TIP revenues.
I think one of the problems was is that because the state doesn't get anything, and yet they do the assessment, that they don't care when the assessment goes up and on. Uh, because we're getting all, all the revenue from the increased assessments. That's been a problem with some of the other TIFs who had it there. You know, of course, they're contingent upon the assessed value and increasing the assessed value. But states is, well, we're not going to increase their value, and so we don't get the increase in the TIF. So, okay, that's just an observation, I guess.
It's, it's important to work very closely with the, with the assessors, whether you're a municipal TIP district or a, or a state, uh, unorganized, to make sure everyone's on the same page on what that increased assessed value will be. And, and, and we like to use very conservative assumptions to make sure that we're on the same, you know, that there are no potential disagreements with the state assessment.
That's a tip and lower last time.
I see. Well, we want to, yeah, work very closely with modeling. And I have another of my colleagues that's doing modeling for the company. Uh, but yeah, the goal is obviously to make sure that everyone's sort of agrees with that increased assessed value will be, I think, probably so that there aren't those taxes. Misunderstandings, I should say. Um, and so then finally, one of the projects, you've got the list of the types of project costs you could use those ones for. Um, infrastructure, for example, that's why, you know, within the district, outside the district that are costs that are related to that. So again, just infrastructure typically, but also public safety improvements can be used. And then there's a third category, which are just general outside, just having the TIP district be related to a TIP district, kinds of costs. And your attorney can go through with you. One of the, one of the things you do, if you decide to set up a TIP district, is you have to say what project costs you'd like to spend your money on, generally. You know, you know, you've got to have these approved costs and, um, DCE is the state agency that will ultimately approve. Uh, just make sure you've done it the right way, essentially.
So example, with the education, general things like that, or it's plus students?
It's more specific, and there's certain things that you're not allowed to spend. You wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to spend on a new county building, for example. Um, the town halls, right, you can build a town hall. You can, for example, in the general category, environmental improvements, um, for commercial arts, use economic development, involving loan funds. So cities and counties use sort of revolving loans for economic, uh, development purposes.
Within the TIP district?
Outside, this is the general category, I'll be using it. So, and it will get more specific if you decide to go on through, but there are three categories of what we call project costs. The cost within the TIP district, outside the district but related to it. So in other words, you may have to have some infrastructure to get to, uh, the TIP district that's related to it. And then there's this third category, which is general. It's not, it's not in or a, uh, necessarily to be related to, but they're more limited to the types. Um, so skills and training, childcare facilities. So we can go through that list with Steven, if you use Steven. But he'll, he'll go through that exercise with you if you set up a TIP district. Because you'll need to kind of identify where you may want to use those funds and some estimates of costs in the future as the, as the revenue starts to come in. And then finally, the third, the sort of final bucket that, that TIP district government uses for is those project costs for the county itself, but also with what we call a credit enhancement agreement. And that's where you hear of the potential revenue sharing with the TIP, sharing with a developer to incentivize the developer. And I'd say more than half of the TIP districts in the state have a type of credit enhancement agreement. Um, and that's something you negotiate once you, uh, what, the next step is we run the numbers to see that taxship benefit to the county and with the benefit of putting it in the TIP district versus not putting it in TIP district. And then potentially sharing in some of those TIP, uh, TIP revenues, um, over a period of time. And sometimes they go up, they go down over time, for example. So a percentage, that's, that's what you're going to negotiate.
So that's what's in it for the developer is that they, they share.
That's right. And they don't, it doesn't, it's not a requirement to have that, but say, like, I could say typically they're set up for the purpose of incentivizing that economic development, and then the county gets that benefit of having these TIP revenues for a particular purpose.
And protect evaluations.
And particularly, exactly, that's the sort of taxship benefit part of this. And that's part of the analysis required is the tip. So you'll get a, you'll get a sort of spreadsheet that shows the taxship benefits.
Does that development have to be within the tax district?
Yeah, you would TIP the area that you want to capture.
The economic development, uh, test got to that, that's got to be within the TIP district, is that correct?
You mean in terms where you can spend your funds on?
Yeah, we'll say we have a developer that want to develop. Does that development have to be physically within the TIP district?
You'd want it to be, yeah.
You'd be just there to develop her.
The idea is you need to, you want to capture the, uh, the value that the developer just put into that.
I see, sorry, they need to have that.
You want to draft it away, the district in a way that captures it.
Yeah, at the minimum, uh, the infrastructure from the, the new values of the solar farm, right? So there's probably a discussion around that area if you wanted to make it bigger, right? To capture something else, like commercial park, for example, is one that, that happens up with a lot of other municipalities, right? Uh, because a lot of times there are multiple things with that for future use within that TIP district. But there is that, as Phil said, that upper bound, um, on the, the size, probably it's not, it's not relevant because of the sheer size of the county. I think Phil is at like 5%, does the, 5% of the area, of the area. So, yeah, you want to, want to figure out where that TIP district, because that's, as the buckets he was mentioning, there's different log uses within geographical boundaries.
It's Phil, Phil, not Phil, Phil?
Phil. That's okay.
This is Phil.
Yeah.
So the, um, what is that percentage typically?
It can really widely vary. I've seen TIP, uh, credit enhancement agreements that are 70% of first, you know, down to 30. I've seen them 50/50. You know, I've seen ones that, that will graduate downward over time as a project. So it really depends. The one thing we could do is pull together some examples of what, you know, other counties have done.
It depends on what, what's, what's an example of what it's dependent on?
It really is, it's part of the negotiation. It's part of what kinds of funds, you know, a couple of different things, the value of having that development in your county. Um, and how much you need to incentivize it to make it viable, economically viable. How much the county wants and or needs to have these separate types of funds? Because again, there's a, there's a real benefit to having them, it's sort of funds that you wouldn't normally have, particularly in a county that's huge. Um, but you're limited in how you can spend them. So some counties, uh, have more need for economic development costs and some have less, right? They may not have stuff to spend on. Um, but there are a number of county tips out there. So that's one thing I would recommend is looking at what the other counties and Steven could be that have spending their funds on. Um, again, it's often economic development purposes. Um, uh, Alec alluded to this. It also depend on where you want to draw your TIP district. So obviously for our purposes, we want to make sure it includes all the area. But it's ultimately the county's TIP district. And so some towns or counties like to expand it a bit. For example, you can include roads. And so some towns or counties like to expand it a bit. For example, you can include roads, just the road parcels. And I've seen that happen sometimes because they want to be able to spend those TIF revenues on upgrading the infrastructure that's within the district. So that's a decision that you'd want to look through and say, we do want to capture a little bit of what the project is. If we use them for the limited purposes that you're allowed in the district.
Well, and 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 that's when roads.
Yeah.
When they're, like in this example, they're really, but almost not apply, right?
Road?
Well, yes, it would. Yeah, it would for this area. The coming in from Route nine is the roads are pretty good shape coming out from sixteen, they they could definitely lose some enhancement.
Any enhancement of that was part of a project, we, if you want to contemplate whether you want to capture that, because that'd be new value as well.
Right, right.
And and then there's multi-use, if you wanted, for the future, you wanted to use those funds to maintain up in outside of the TIF district, for example, that that would be eligible, we've seen that happen in in other, you know, other projects where a main hall route that's ten miles away to the wind farm, you know, that became part of the TIF district. And then, you know, it's got other uses than just getting to the wind farm in that town. So that was eligible for dollars to go towards the maintenance and upkeep and improvement of that that specific section.
You know, obviously, TIFs can't have a TIF, right? You couldn't have a district within a district.
I was getting this. Yeah, it's a, no, it's a, no, you would carve it out and create a new district if you were doing it.
Right, yeah. Yep, I'm just curious, because the one, the full bill or three of us, I mean, the others.
I can't, I can't.
When, if they, if they captured any of the road from.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think you would just, as far as that, physical footprint. I think you, I think it'd be an exercise of looking at what the physical footprint is for all of those and then seeing if there is or isn't overlap. As far as a road, that's probably the example that would happen. And then actually doing the math to on the, if they're all in Hancock County, what's the aggregate size of the total TIF districts, just to make sure you're under that five percent cap, which I don't think, I don't think you're gonna hit.
So in this example, um the whole parcel area is is eleven hundred acres. And the, right, I'm looking at that.
Yeah.
And and then the the project component is like four hundred and eighty-four acres. So you, you probably would want to lean towards the four eighty-four instead of the eleven hundred, because then you're bumping up against the legislation for 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 future TIFs, right? Because you can't have, you can't, I forgot what the percentage is, but there's a percentage of area you could have five percent.
Yeah, which would be, you know, very difficult to hit.
Yeah.
You know, it's it's very, it's difficult to hit even municipality for a county that's, so it's a lot of area.
Yeah, so. Also, that would apply to any future developments in that area. If you extend it too wide, then you kind of lost.
That's right.
Yeah, so that's why my thinking is you would want to be conservative, conservative then. And then there's the whole negotiation of who gets the benefit of the TIF.
Right.
And then where do community benefit funds?
So there, so there is, if you look at other examples of other projects in the state, you have side by side, right? Um so there's a lot of examples where you have the TIF and the community benefit agreement. And they're, you know, they're maybe executed simultaneously, right? So there, there's more flexibility with the community benefit agreement. Uh and as us, the developer, as long as, you know, there's a net benefit to the project, then there's, you know, those aren't, those aren't our dollars to spend. Those are our dollars to to that we have to pay anyway, if it was just straight tax. So oftentimes, the municipality or the county says, okay, I've got two different buckets. This one has a lot more flexibility because it's community, it's a, pretty much is a bilateral agreement between a project and and a county. And then, and whatever percentage you wanted to allocate depends on where you wanted those funds to flow, right? If you, if you thought that you couldn't, because there are other TIFs in Hancock County already, and you're maxing out the economic development potential, right? Then there might be, it might weigh more to the community benefit, so.
Is that, is that strictly our decision to make?
Oh, that's a negotiate.
Well.
Now, why, but if, just saying, using round figures, if if your share is a hundred thousand, what do you care whether it's fifty fifty or eighty twenty?
Well, the whole idea for us is there's a net benefit to us, other than what we would pay normally just straight tax, right?
So is this something that as a developer, a business, you need this project to make it kind of?
Yeah.
So even especially in the early phases as you move on throughout the life of it?
This is exactly the point at which it my charge is to, given our, you know, cost to construct, the cost to interconnect, the cost of panels, right? How can we make the project more economic? And this is one of, this is one of those levels, right? And and there's tax, this helps us for modeling and tax certainty as well, right? Um over, over the long term.
So where I'm, because the TIF and community benefits, it's, they're separate agreements, but they overlap, right? So the community benefits is not, is in lieu of the TIF district, is that true? You you understand my dilemma?
Yeah, they're sort of, well, they are separate, so.
Yeah.
They, a community benefit agreement really is a sort of voluntary, I would say. It's a voluntary agreement.
On you, on your behalf, yes.
Right, that's right. There's certain wind projects that are required.
Right, exactly. Per statute, wind has to do X amount, it's four thousand dollars per megawatt, but solar doesn't have that.
So there is a requirement of solar, but but it's, you know, to some solar developers have entered into these agreements. Essentially, what they're saying is we, we will, because you're, we're in your community, pay a certain amount. And to to the county, so it's just a separate, but it's separate from the taxes. So I guess you could see your relations, I I suspect, but.
But on on the developer's side, you that you're not, the community benefits doesn't isolate the that delta taxes, right? Yeah, I don't know how to answer this question, but how to ask this question, but in the TIF district, you're locking that delta in, you know, from the million, from the hundred thousand to the whatever you said, ten million.
Right.
Okay, so if part of that is uh community benefits, oh no, you're not. Community benefits is not land, it's an amount.
It's just an amount of money, like you said, but to use a weak example, it's a tax per balance per megawatt.
Okay, yeah, I was keyed in on.
Much simpler, yeah, simpler agreement, right?
Yeah. But does one affect how much the other one is? In other words, a higher community benefit amount reduce the the TIF amount?
No, no, there'd be just separate, completely separate.
Separate?
No, one's sort of the tax item, one is just the voluntary, essentially payment.
When you say voluntary, but you said you require not solar for what?
It's the wind. There's a, there's a state law that requires some community benefit for a certain wind project above a certain size.
I see, but not for solar, there's not, there's not, so everything is voluntary. Well, it's sort of, it's it's sort of negotiated.
It's negotiated.
So like with the TIF and a and a community benefit, there could be a potential where a greater percentage back to developer would be, yeah, and the offset would be, yeah, we'll set up a community benefit over here.
Exactly.
Because our, yeah, our, our, our bottom line, I mean, it's, what are, what are our taxes without the TIF, without community benefit? That's where we start, right? We have to pay tax per year over, you know, at appreciation. And then the the, where the community benefit comes in just gives more flexibility on where those dollars can flow.
Yeah.
We're gonna be less incentivized for you guys to capture a hundred percent and then, and we do a community benefit on top of of that, right?
So the the higher your percentage of the TIF, the more willing you are to give a CBA, is that correct? That's the whole deal?
Yeah.
It's to our advantage to consider a higher TIF before you can get a.
Yeah, I would just be careful because they are separate, right? Because, uh, you know, and main revenue service, so you are tipping it and then you're limited on how you can use those funds.
Right.
Right? It's, I wouldn't think of it as a one-to-one or just a pass-through. It's not, that's not the way it legally, it can work, you know.
But do you will?
But but there are levers, there are levers. And then, you know, to the extent there are community benefit dollars, as Alex said, those are not limited. That's just goes into your general fund and the county uses it the way you want it. Sometimes I have seen the community benefit agreements where they, they like to put right in the agreement what they will spend it on. So like, you know, I've seen that in an agreement, so they have particular projects they want to spend or some can be able to love uh trails, or, you know, I've seen different things, but but there's more flexibility.
So there was a sunset to the TIF, twenty years?
It can be thirty years. Um you you don't have to do a thirty-year TIF to start. Um, you know, that's part of when you're looking at the numbers, but they could be, they're maximum thirty years. And you can always go back and amend them if you want to do, for example, twenty or whatever you end up coming up with. And uh, yeah, thirty years. And you might be good now to talk about the process just very briefly. It's, um, you know, it's literally by, you guys get to make the decision. Um so um there needs to be a public hearing. It's a pretty straightforward process. Has to be a public hearing on it. There needs to be a newspaper advertisement ten days before that, since it's very specific. Um and then you have a public hearing and then you vote to adopt the TIF district and development program. Um and that's typically in that same order, if you do have an authorized credit enhancement agreement. The next step would is that it does go to the Department of Economic and Community Developments, TIF, just uh TIF Division. And they review, they don't review it for the policy reasons. They're gonna defer to you on whether, why you wanted it and all that. They're gonna just make sure you, you hit all the boxes you need to get, follow the right process. Um and sometimes there is a little back and forth during that, just for technical, technical revisions. They'll say, oh, you need to fix this, you need to fix that, and then finally get an approval letter from the commissioner of DCE, and then you've got a TIF in place.
And but the the decision on whether to do a TIF is ultimately in the TIF, you know.
It's your decision.
It's our decision because it's in the UT.
That's right.
And this, this project is entirely.
Yes, entirely, yeah. And we've done in the past too, just because there can be tougher that iterations of of the different splits or how to capture. So we've done professional fee reimbursement agreements, right, with municipalities or counties so that, you know, we 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 can provide the support, financial, to do that analysis with your attorney. So that's something we've done a a number of counties and and towns as well.
So that was, my next question actually was, uh obviously, we're we're gonna need to legal representation here.
Right.
And that count, that gets paid out of ultimately the TIF funds or where does that?
We would offer a professional fee reimbursement agreement, so whatever dollars, we'd we'd cap it, you know. I've seen, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars is is what's pretty customary for other, you know, other negotiations. So that way that those dollars were legal and, you know, review of analysis on on the splits is born out of that. It's, we we would reimburse for the fees incurred associated with the effort.
So we would enter an agreement.
Yeah.
Basically, my guess is that's why I'm here today, to see if we're, if we if we're receptive to the idea and then we'll probably formulate some agreement that says, okay, you need professional help, this is how, is that?
I wouldn't say you need professional help.
Yeah, I knew, yeah.
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly.
And I've actually worked with Stephen on a similar, where, you know, his firm was reimbursed by the developer on the agreement, so he'd be familiar with that type of agreement.
Okay.
And and then partly, you know, you tend to have attorneys both sides, so you figure out early on who's gonna do the laboring or, and we usually offer to do that, so we would draft all the documents. And then have the county review them through your attorney. And we don't have to do it that way, but that's typically what we do, is sort of take the laboring or on the work. Um and then Stephen, companies, uh.
And I guess.
Reimburse his time.
My guess is if we go with Stephen, that's a discussion we have.
That's right, that's right.
Well, we already have a relationship with Republican Rachel, their firm, so I think that's our next step is to contact them and talk to them about this issue and who in their firm they would suggest to represent us. Is that, yeah, my apologies. I mean, no, no offense, we've got the cash house, but yes, all of the cash. Well, advice first.
Yeah, so.
It's not a today only offer, anyway.
Yeah. Well, you know, this is exciting, again.
Yeah.
I'm I'm glad to see it came to fruition.
Well, we we are too, right? It's like, oh, yeah, there's.
That meeting we had downstairs, I won't call it negativity, but it was a lot of wonder whether or not they could pull this off. And so I was sort of pleased to see the basement could progress on this.
Yep, we've hit a lot of milestones and we're working towards.
Is the, is the physical footprint cleared and ready for development, or is that? I don't know what's got.
Yeah, the majority of the civil work is done.
So we could look at that and get a good sense of where these panels are going with that.
Yep.
It's all up there two, three years ago and saw the problem. I I I sort of, because I fly over this area quite a bit, I I can flag it, so I can. It's basically blueberry fields.
Yeah.
Well, that's what the wing body for, he was de-rocking it the day that we were up there visiting, four blueberries.
There'll be similar sites, like, you know, the, uh, they'll, they'll fly it again, get the topo again, and there'll be some grading, like fine grading, right? But the majority, you know, it's pretty flat to begin with, and so, uh, yeah, like, most of that that work that is is done. You have to do, you know, trenching for for the collection line, medium voltage, right? Um and more road construction, but um not a whole lot compared to, compared to other sites. So the bulk of the work next, you know, next year will be pounding the post, right? Setting, getting the racking done and including all of the, all the wiring and and setting of the panels.
So so it's sort of tucked in below the wind farms.
Right, or, yeah, can you see how it's sort of?
Yeah.
They're kind of surrounded.
Surrounded, you know, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because the wind starts going up pretty steep, right, as you get to the wind farm. So you're sort of in that basin or?
The flattest area around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where is the, the, what do you call it, where you, the the station, in other words, the?
That, I can just point it, I don't know if we marked it out there, but it's adjacent to the transmission line, right? So that'll be right, right here.
Or is that?
Yeah.
What do you call it?
So it's a substation.
Substation.
Actually, I think they show, actually, this little piece here. I think it's just on the south side of that. See how it kind of comes into the east?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, so the substation is probably.
It's, it's just like the other, like for Hancock and Weaver and.
Have you seen a substation?
No. The same configuration where they have a three ring, three, it's called a three ring breaker. So they break the line in three places, so that goes, one goes to the solar facility, one goes east, one goes west. So you're breaking the line so that, for, to manage the power flows, but but it looks like a typical substation. Transformer there as well, on the pad.
So Bull Hill's not located. Well. This is Bull Hill.
Yeah, actually, it should be, that blue sky is.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, it's just, this is the yellow, this is my old map. Or that.
This is Bull Hill.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is the old name. Because you have Hancock above, yeah.
So is these four Hancock?
No, I think this is the, oh, yeah, that's right.
That's Hancock and that is.
Yeah, this is, and then this is Bull Hill, right?
Is this all Bull Hill?
Yeah, it was it, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Oh, is it a third small one?
Well, Weaver's, I don't think, on the map, is it?
Weaver.
Yeah, Weaver's the, I think, the third.
That's back in the, ten, oh, no.
It's just all the two.
Now, there's no trail system through here, right? No wheel trail or TV trail, there is? Yep. There is. There you go. Through the wind farm, but not through this. Oh, oh, no, well.
No, because it doesn't go north, it goes north of, right? So they come right through, but they come right through.
There is a trail over those, there only hits one ninety-three in Washington County. And the reason I'm asking this is part of the, that's part of the TIF discussion, or possibly.
Isn't there a public access? I thought there was a public access that goes straight through the.
Yes, uh, through the configuration of. Yeah, but the port bearings and down through there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when they go down the port bearings and head out towards one ninety-three.
Yeah.
And so, so you said that there is public access through here?
I think currently the road goes right on the southern, southern side here. Yeah, I thought it was, I don't have a map, can't remember through brain, but I think it goes through the um southern portion, so.
Yeah, I think this map, I will see it. When you say public access.
So it's a, these people use it, people use it, and it's not, I mean, we can't, we can't gate it off, right? Like, we're not allowed to gate that off, because it need, we need to allow easement through it, that's what it's.
And there's, because you have like two. And there's, because you have like two timber companies, any charred, I think there's shared use to of that, of this.
This road that we're talking about or the other adjacent landowners. But I know AFM managers for a lot of timber owners in this area. I think they have reciprocal agreements or a lot up here. I know on the, on the way behind, but this one as well.
And AF, uh, AMF, AFM.
Very fortunate, AFM.
AFM, they. They actually give permits for ATV's. They actually assign, so. You have to, I guess you have to join a club to get one or something like that. So then that gives them access to.
So, so the reason I'm asking these questions. When do things, how do we learn about things? Like that? Is that through the negotiating of the TIF agreement? That.
For is it easements or?
Yeah, easements and public access and.
We can, we can provide that. So if one of the ideas is, all right, maybe you want to allocate some of those dollars to the ATV, but trail system.
Yeah.
We can help facilitate where those are, who we talk to. You know, if that, if you wanted to include that in the district and who you currently use it, yeah, we, we can, we can help as part of that process.
Okay, yeah, because I, I mean, I, I don't know how else we learn. About.
You tell them, been talking to Miller, AT director? Miller Billings?
No.
We need to get him involved in this real soon. Miller manages our. I won't say a test, but he's, he's our authority on anyone. He's very knowledgeable about.
Well, he's our UT director.
Yeah, he's our UT director and very knowledgeable about these window projects and all this other stuff. I'm. Really surprised he's not here today. I don't know what happened to him because he is. He's a real good resource, at least for us on all this.
And I, I would assume you will, so.
Yeah, that'd be helpful for us. We don't really know what's happening on the, you know, the Hancock or the Bull Hill side or any of, you know, any of those tips, the way, how that's being administered. So. And that'd be helpful to make sure this.
Yeah, Michael.
Yeah, we, we did reach out to Miller, both, Patrice and I, so I'm, I'm surprised he didn't. Come in remotely today as well, so I'll have to.
If he's a god or something, because he. He will be heavily involved at this point. It's, it's like our ground representative for us.
Thanks.
Okay, so next steps. Get representation. Touch on next steps.
Sounds to me like the next step for us would simply get to run the windshield and. Let them know what's going on and see if they suggest Steve represents us for this project.
And probably the first step would be if, if there's interest, we. We work on a professional fee reimbursement agreement.
Yes, that's.
And then getting a, a work, work from there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's interest.
That agreement specify our attorney's firm and whatnot, it's just a bulk amount or?
Yeah, it'll be the, the amount and, yeah, whoever you choose to represent.
Okay.
And then it would be Bernstein chair on the.
Who specifically, on what firm?
We'll put it whatever firm that you end up working with. And then there's typically a cap. You know, you'll agree to a certain amount that we're reimbursed to.
Sure. So we do need to get in touch with rather than.
Yeah, so I think that, that's our first, next step is, Michael, we need to reach out.
Yep.
And communicate with.
Who we're communicating with, so you.
So I reached out, yes, with me, yeah. Sorry, I meant I'm.
Wait, you, Michael, you have good contact.
I have to, yeah, I'll just make sure. I'll make sure that you are. Actually, just a second.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you. I think we're all set. I'm sorry, we appreciate, appreciate the time.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the dedication. Thank you.
These, uh, these negotiations. Is this like union negotiations where you meet at the executive session and mail out the details? I mean, how, you call it negotiations, it's?
Yes, you are. So you are allowed to meet executive session.
Would it, is this that formal and this strategic a process that we sit down?
Yeah, I think a lot of times it's ironed out. You'll get direction to your attorney or, you know, we, and it's sort of ironed out between the parties and then there will be a public discussion of it. So it's all public eventually. But you are obviously allowed to meet with your attorney and discuss this in executive session.
Very good. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
It's chair time again.
Yeah. So our yearly chair discussion.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, RCC, request approval or replace one chair and dispatch will be paid from our office.
So we have a individual down there who's very large in stature, the chairman of. Years ago now, I believe. Is going to be recycled in my office, my chair needs replaced as well. So. The chair is barely adequate for him. He's already repaired it once.
Is this a new chair?
No, this is a, this is one we bought three or four years ago now. Through my. Capital reserve account.
Okay, because we just did some.
We did, we did, the standard dispatch chairs that, uh.
Okay.
Take an individual is too large, so we did do that.
Okay.
This is just, this is a larger one. Reasonable accommodation. Side benefits to get a new to be chair that.
So I'm going to move to approve the purchase of one chair and then dispatch from the Milton Walsh Associates in a sum of one thousand eight hundred and four dollars to be paid from the ARPA funds. Seconded?
We've been seconded. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
That's our unanimous. Thank you. Okay. County administrator, first up to third party budget requests.
So we did a little bit of. Associating, started the beginning phases of two twenty-four budget process. And that reminded me, we had a conversation during that time last year where we talked about third party requests and what do we want to do and how do we want to set that up? Obviously, when we got to the end of the budget process last year, then you kind of pulled a lot of that back out and put it into. TV or other ARPA funds for those projects. So. There was discussion at the time, our current application process that we had, which. Monica gave me a copy again, as you reminded this morning. And really looking for guidance as to what direction you want to go is, is there something in mind? You want us to develop a new?
Yeah.
Form or a new process? Or are you going to look at this as maybe being? Separate from the budget process now and more of a CBE kind of application to protect the thing?
So the general idea is going to be, we're going to have, uh, we're going to put forward a budget amount. Uh, that will be included. It's going to be matched with whatever comes out of the budget process from CB. So. Off the hand, I've come up with a proposal of that we're going to put on the budget of thirty-five thousand dollars. If that ends up getting approved, whatever gets approved through the budget process is going to get matched on the CB side. And that's going to be so. And then that total is what is going to go into a grant program that is going to. Be applied for after the budget process is complete and we know where we're at. Monetarily, so. Uh, my proposal would be that we're going to end up having the applications due, uh, January fifth. Uh, have the grants awarded on February twentieth is a rough benchmark. Uh, so to me, we're kind of pulling, uh. The department seventeen. Essentially, get rid of it. And, uh, the only thing that's going to really remain.
Are the two other departments that were.
Yeah, so the other two will be, come their own departments. And I would think we could probably, in terms of where we're going to put the, the. Budget portion in terms of what department I, I don't know why we couldn't put it in the commissioner's department. There's a line for the commissioner's department that I would. You guys figure out where you think it would be more appropriate, but that's kind of what I think.
Yeah, I'd like to see us remove department seventeen entirely. Now, there's, there's no more department seventeen. I'd like to see the, uh. The cooperative extension and the Hancock County alignment get their own. Uh, identifying number, uh, budget number, the, no, uh.
Department.
Department number, correct.
Separate from.
Yep.
As you're saying.
And whatnot, right. And whatever amount that we do budget for matching for the grant. I, I agree with John, just add that a line to the commissioner's budget and would be. You know.
So the amount will go through the budget process?
Well, the match, the match amount.
Yeah.
We set with thirty-five, it may go up, it may go down, but whatever the amount. Gets approved in December, then we match that in January from the community benefits and then solicit for applications. In the meantime, we'll this fall, we'll work on the application process.
I figure it's going to be some kind of a hybrid. What we had before for, uh. Uh, I printed out. Uh, what we had used before for a community benefits grant application, just kind of. Uh, pull out what isn't really appropriate there and. Maybe marry it up a little bit with the budget questionnaire. Uh, I don't think it should be too hard from just a quick look at the two.
And, and we've, on the two that are out of the, out of the. We've already taken action as I remember. To set those up, right?
Well.
Talked about it.
We didn't, we didn't, no, we've never.
Well, it's for, it's for twenty twenty-four, so we haven't set up those.
No, but I mean, last year.
You, you leave the framework.
Yeah.
So we have a market laid to, to remove those two from department seventeen after the current budget. Basically, so, I mean, we even put down here on the budget calendar, you'll see, we haven't assigned the numbers yet, but. Actually, knowing that these two now will have their own department. So what I assume the next step for us would be to reach, and we had had conversations with one of the two entities already. But we didn't know exactly what you want to do.
And, and they will actually file one of these, just like they always do.
That's what we assume you probably want them to do is just provide financials and rationale and reasons for, and then that way. Now, the rest of them, would you like us to do a proactive thing where we reach out to the groups we funded in the past and say, look, this is the new process that the commission is undertaking for this year? So. Your August budget.
I would think you'd want to, just because, as you mentioned, it's dating anyway, so you might as well be proactive and at least send out the letter saying. There's going to be a grant. Application process in. The. The grant applications are not going to be available until, uh, after, uh. The beginning of December because we won't have the final budget signed.
Well, right. And in the past, we had two or three of them. You know, say. Mention that there was tough for them to meet. I mean, this helps them, in my opinion. Moves the deadline.
Well, you're only going to notify the recipients of this year's department seventeen, correct?
I would assume, yeah.
At some point, we'll, we'll, on the website or something, we'll advertise the package or something, but, uh. You're going to do something with the people. Who are recipients this year.
Yeah.
And for letting them know what the process is going to be next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. To us, to me, this seems more streamlined. What about? How you feel, Monica?
At the moment, it's a little bit jumbled, but I think we'll get there.
It's what, what moment?
I, I think at the moment it's slightly jumbled, but I think I know the framework that you were talking about when we were doing the twenty twenty-three budget. So. I think we'll get there. It's just a little bit of.
Is setting up a new department a difficult process?
No, no, that part's easy. Uh, and then I just have to fully understand what.
Really just, I mean.
What, understanding what John just mentioned.
Go through, but it's really just a matter. I mean, it's basically the same thing. You're just kind of switching it from the budget process now over to more like you did with the CBE, you know, community benefit fund in the past.
Well, I think in your mind too, you just got to remember that the, that the CBA grant process is separate from the budget. It really is. I mean, it's a whole separate program, a whole separate process.
Yep.
Even the timing is different because we're not even going to decide, as John said, who the recipients are going to be until after the budget's.
Right.
Finalized. So we know how much money we're going to offer. But.
So, I mean, at a streamlined, basic point, what you're saying is basically instead of making the taxpayers' fund, these are from now on. We're going to remove that. Now they're going to be, yeah, so. I mean, we, we get it.
Half of it.
Yeah.
Does it make sense?
Yeah.
I think it makes.
It does to me. I mean, I, I went through and looked at a number of others. Various counties what they fund to, and, and they're all different, but I mean, they all definitely have like two or three main funding ones that they require to fund. And then they fund the other ones in different ways. Now, many of them do do the budgets, but they're not. They're probably not as many different entities even as Hancock County is. Some are, but some aren't. But it's, it's the basic concepts similar, same as what everybody does.
Because I find what we were doing to be messy. Because they'd come here and then they'd come to the budget advisory.
Commission.
Commission and then committee and then back here. Again, when we adopted the budget. So to me, that was messy.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of footwork for the, for the organization.
Well, the problem is, is it became emotional.
Yeah, you know, these, these groups.
I'd rather have us, if, if you have to pick winners and losers, I'd rather just have it be us pick winners and losers and not make the CBA go back and forth. And wringing their hands about it. And so that way we're taking tax burden off the citizens, uh, at least to, uh, to the fifty percent and. Then the mechanics of how things get awarded is just going to be in our lap.
And Michael, uh, the process we used last time had, was a very objective process. A process that we could and probably should share with the, with the applicants. Yeah, this is the, because it's almost a two-step process. It's. Meeting the criteria to apply and then. How we're going to decide who gets what for a piece of the pie, you know, so it's actually. And, and we will, uh, we'll have two very distinct objective, uh, criterias, uh, processes that we will use to. Which kind of takes the emotion out of it.
Yeah, we've actually scoring, we've had scoring sheets in the past that we can look at and modify again.
Right, so, yep. And at some point, John, yeah, we'll have to sit down and look at those in detail and see how much of those still fit.
Yeah.
Because I remember, I can't remember too much that wouldn't fit. You've looked at them recently?
Yeah, I looked a little bit at it, uh, last couple of meetings, you know, so.
Yeah, and maybe we can get Paul to join us this time and score again. Didn't have last time.
Hey, I, that. You okay at this point, Monica?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, no, I appreciate that. That gives us the insight we need to move forward.
We don't need the action.
No, I mean, I don't think so at this point. Um, you know, that gives us what we need to move forward. We'll start treating this for those two entities as part of the budget process and separate the rest of it. Send those notes up.
Okay.
Does that take care of the time one?
Budget drive timeline.
Budget drive timeline. So that's, uh. We didn't necessarily, or I didn't include in there the third party, but it, you know, I think you just answered that. We don't have to worry about that. So. This is an aggressive timetable. So I took last year's timetable and remembering the issues that we had, you know, which were a couple, obviously having. To make decisions right after the public hearing, uh, and then also having you make decisions. At the last meeting, but before to be able to. Send something to the public hearing. So we have enough time in advance to advertise and send out the notes as a lot of people to review it. So. And, and I'm, again, this is for your comment, obviously, so I'm open to discussion, but basically. What we've looked at right now is kind of starting in August and moving through up until the nineteenth of September with the various departments. And I did kind of run these by the departments as part of the. Uh, department head meeting and. Everyone that was there seemed to be fine with no conflicts that they know of right now. The ones that weren't, we followed up with and they seem to be okay with what's proposed there. There, you know, if you're worried about the timetable starting too soon, then obviously we can condense those workshops into just the three. Instead of having that, this department wraps up, public hearing, presentation and all that stuff. But the thought is, again, with that September nineteenth, that hopefully that would. Give us enough chance so that we have pretty much everything lined up for you and then it'd be ready to go for public hearing anyway. So that was kind of the thought process, but if there is a concern about, again. Making this too soon or dragging it, spreading out too much, then that would be one area where you could look at removing one of those four proposed dates. For the workshops. And I, and I've only proposed those based on. Continuing the every two week kind of meeting schedule or whatever that is that you've had. So. It's not say you couldn't have special meetings or anything else, but I didn't do that without hearing feedback. So that's the, kind of the first part. And then that takes you to the public hearing. Getting ready for the proposed, uh, transfer of the budget that you put together to the BAC. The one thing I wanted to note on that is that you see in their, like, public hearing, it indicates that at least ninety days for the end of the county's fiscal year. And same thing with getting into the budget advisory committee. It's the same thing. No later than, or no later than ninety days for the end of the county's fiscal year. Normally under the budget schedules that I looked at, October second was that deadline date because that took you to basically ninety-one days before. The ninetieth day, so if you're counting the actual day, the ninetieth day, it is October. The ninetieth day, so if you're counting the actual day, the ninetieth day, it is October third, and I don't know how comfortable you feel with kind of. Whether somebody's gonna get upset over saying, well, that's not a full ninety days, or I, I don't know, but just to make you aware. Normally, the cutoff's been October second, so there's been no discussion with that. This October third would be the actual day, but that also takes us to the commissioners' meeting for that schedule for that month. Which is why I threw it in there to see what you could, you know, what the commission wanted to do. Uh, otherwise, you probably have to then, after the same thing like we did last year, after the September twenty-seventh public hearing. Have a special meeting of the commission to vote on any changes that you might have made as a result of the public hearing, which we can do, but last year, that seemed. Be difficult for you to do.
Why the twenty-seventh September? That's Wednesday?
And and that one's open to interpretation, I've seen it all over, so I've seen Wednesday nights for that, I've seen. At points, a couple of years ago, you used to do it during the commissioners' meetings, I mean, that, the public hearing portion of that is, or that timetable, as long as you're meeting the ninety days. You have flexibility when you set that entirely.
So, but our meeting for September.
So September's would be um.
We're meeting on the fifth and the nineteenth.
Yeah, fifth and nineteenth. Or is I have it six, is it six or? Oh, because of the holiday, Labor Day, later, okay, yeah, gotcha. Um, so, yeah, sixth and the nineteenth are September's regular meeting days and then.
I seem to remember in the past that we, we started our meeting with a public hearing. At that point, then we went into deliberations on the budget and finalized the budget, and that's what we accomplished at one meeting, do you remember that, John?
Well, that's where we did the first year.
Yeah, so, because right now, on the, which would be the twenty, twenty-seventh, the only thing we're doing is the.
You're basically coming here for the public hearing, like you did last year, yeah.
And if that takes three minutes.
Now, you're in and out.
But if we.
But see, if we couldn't do that, you, I, I see Michael's dilemma.
You'd almost, I mean, you could take it out and have this nineteenth be the public hearing date, but I mean, if anything happens and you don't get it wrapped up, then you're kind of, you've compressed that a lot, you know?
And and the first meeting in October is when?
Third. Would be the third.
Okay, yeah, so that's a word.
And that's why I was saying, that gets you to that, it's not, if you count back into seven thirty-first, like I did it three or four times, the ninetieth day lands on the third. So. You know, was it ninety full days, twenty-four hour days, or is it just at least by the ninetieth day?
And I'd say, who's gonna raise the issue, well, I mean, I don't, I, the B A C would be the one that would be concerned, and they're gonna get it at the same time anyway, probably, regardless, so.
I think as long as we took it, got it backed up from by that day, I can imagine.
So are you proposing, though, that we finalize the budget on the October third?
Yes, under this, that's what I would say, but you would have to have it completely finalized, because then we would need to to make any final changes. Now, some of this gets into where we're at with the budget process, too, I mean. You you could, you could put a meeting after the public hearing if you wanted to do that. And then if it's done, you could approve it and we could send it off, and then the October third basically. Wouldn't be needed, but that.
Well, that's what I, exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, that would just require us to basically include something, or even, it doesn't have to be that Wednesday, I mean, you could basically make it. Uh, the week after the nineteenth, or well, you know, we kind of need it for the ten days, so we need a little bit more time, that's why. You could, well, you could do it like September twenty-six and do it in the morning and have a special meeting, I mean, that really gets back to availability of commissioners when you want to be able to do this again.
Well, here's the other thing is that if we. You gotta have a public hearing. We're gonna have the budget document. That's what the. That's what finalizes this, we finalize it after. The public hearing, right?
In theory, you could finalize it after the public hearing, so that if comments came up during the public hearing or whatever, you could adjust and react to it.
Yeah, but don't you have to have a finalized document to present at public?
You have to have, yeah, a draft document of the budget that you're proposing to to go.
Well, the problem is, is that the B A C wants their budget books at the public hearing. That's what they complained about last year, is that's all they had were raw figures with no, with no information.
See, that's why I think we need to finalize it before the public hearing, because we don't have an official document until we finalize.
So, I mean, we could do it then based on this schedule, on nineteenth, you could finalize it then and and just, it's with the understanding on the twenty-seventh or whenever you decide the final public hearing date is. That, that that's what we're proposing, this is what's going to be A C, and if people have concerns or issues with it, you gotta attend the B A C meeting and try to convince them.
Do you have time enough to put together that budget book for the B A C members if we finalize it on the nineteenth and have a public hearing on the twenty-seventh? It's eight days.
Yeah, sure.
You can do that? Because that's really, that's really the biggest issue, because, I mean, you call it a public hearing, but the only people that show up is the Budget Advisory of B A C members. So, and then. And then, I, I think they kind of have a misconception about what the public hearing is, it's not, that's not. Their opportunity to talk to us about the budget, it's.
Well.
Do that at the B A C meetings, but.
Cause I was always thought that you really don't have a budget until you finalize the budget. Therefore, you don't have anything to present to the public hearing until you've done that.
Well, you have a proposed budget, so I mean. B A C does not get the budget, they get a proposed budget, this is our proposal, and we want your comments regarding that, so.
So. What do you think, Michael?
So, I mean, under that scenario, we could set the date for the nineteenth to be to finalize the, finalize the budget, and if there was any wrap-ups or whatever, but I mean, hopefully, there wouldn't be. And I don't envision there would be, as long as we can get everything, you know, starting out with the first meetings in in August.
So, could the public hearing be a part of the September nineteenth meeting, or that changes your timeline?
If we change the timeline, but it 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 wouldn't give us enough time to really advertise and also have a document that we can present.
Okay.
To be the final.
Yeah.
That's why, really, it does have to.
Which is what happened last year.
It really has to be, to be safe, it really has to be somewhere after the nineteenth through October second.
A full week.
And usually, seven days, so we'd have the notice, but I mean.
Well, it could be as late as October third, if we, in theory. It gives you more time to get that book, get that book together.
It just really gets back to, again, what, what it says, at least ninety days to. Well, what do you count that ninetieth day to be again?
So, I feel that on the nineteenth, we could.
Sure.
We could finalize that budget.
Well, you can, what you're doing is you're, you're getting the proposed budget to be, see the.
Yeah.
Proposed budget. What proposal, we want to send a final proposed budget, and you know, so obviously. That's getting to be a less, a less difficult process, because when they get all done, they send it back to us and say, well, it's the best we can do, you guys work on. So, I mean, we spend much time.
After.
Finalizing that budget after B A C than before.
So. Does that make sense, Michael?
Yeah, I mean, the only question I have now is when do you want to do the public hearing?
You think we're risking, being risky by doing it on the third?
I mean, I always, I say that. I I agree with you, and I don't think anybody's really gonna complain, but I, I, you know, somebody wanted to make a big fuss about it, but then again, what, what did they out? I mean, what, what did they lose by the fact we didn't give it to them by midnight on, you know, October second versus. You know, ten hours later on, as long as the public advertising and notices and everything else goes out.
The only reason I'd suggest October third is to give you more time to get those books together, that's up to you, I guess, putting back on the issue, is that. If you'd like that extra week.
So, yeah.
You uh. Tell us.
Well, let, we can discuss that internally, I guess, and then decide. From there, but if we weren't gonna do it on the third, then.
Twenty-seventh would probably be fine.
Yeah, I think, I, I think. I think setting, setting it tentatively for the twenty-seventh is, makes sense, that way. We don't have this, you know.
In a, in the evening, like, like it was last year.
Do, what do you?
What happened last year, as I recall, was the B A C, like he said, all showed up wondering where their books were, and all it was, was that public hearing, there was a misunderstanding.
But they were.
Oh, that's true, I forgot about that.
Yeah, that's what happened, last year, they complained, they said, whatever you say, we can't have the books for the twenty-seventh. Because it's not fine.
No, uh, no, because it's that ninety-day window.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, I, I mean, certainly, within this case, you, if you finalize on the nineteenth, that, that, even with the twenty-seventh, I mean, that gives us eight days to. To get it to them, you know, and many of them probably won't. They'll come that night and pick it up anyway, but we can also do like we did before, is email what we've got to them too in advance, so that they, they would have it, same with anybody else, if any members of the public want to request it, we'd have it. I mean, for the most part, I'm gonna assume by the time we get to the nineteenth, you know, there'll be some changes, but it shouldn't be like we've gotta go back and recreate the whole wheel, but to put that one out.
Haven't we taken any argument away if we, if we email it to all the B A C members prior to the third?
For the B A C part, yeah, the only part that I guess would be questionable is, is did we somehow put the, the public at a disadvantage because.
They got it before.
Well, no, but I mean, the public couldn't have the public hearing input, which isn't, again, like you just stated, really isn't.
So we sent out a document before the public, public hearing, that's what we shouldn't do.
But, I mean, we're gonna send out whatever we have anyway, and if you're not gonna make changes after nineteenth, the document is what the document is. And and the argument would be is, if you had the public hearing then on the same day, is that what you were kind of alluding to rather than the twenty-seventh? Just having it on October third, the public hearing during the commission meeting, that, where you're going with that, or?
Uh. Yeah, the reason I'm caught up here is that. Because I think the B A C is misusing, no, that's a tough word, but they're, they're misunderstanding the purpose of the public hearing and coming here. It's, it's like it's the first step in their B A C requirements, responsibilities, because of that, uh, some of those people aren't gonna make it. Uh, I don't know, I just think.
I mean, I don't perceive there being a problem from that standpoint, if we, if we email it to them and and we have it ready for them by then, we need that deadline anyway, so.
Cause then you can't, well, you, we can't say publicly that, once we send them, once we finalize on the seventeenth, that's, it's cast in stone, because. That's the perfect purpose of a hearing for the public to come in and say, I understand this is it, but I want you to consider this change, and we do. We are, you know, we do have the ability to to change based upon public comment.
Maybe we just need to make it clear to the B A C that this is not their meeting, it's a.
So what kind of the last step, one of the last steps?
I mean, they don't even have to be here, that's just tradition.
Yeah, cause the statute really says that we have to take action, some sort of action on a budget to send to the. B A C, and that we, we have to have a public hearing on what we sent to them.
It's just.
Right?
Right.
So, I mean, the statute says at least nine days for the end of the county's fiscal year, have a public hearing. Uh, and then the other part just indicates no later than ninety days for the end of the county's fiscal year, uh, the proposed budget will go to the B A C.
So why can't we have a public hearing on the nineteenth?
Cause we will not have technically finalized by that point, that.
That's right, we will have the book, yeah.
Yeah, and we definitely won't have the books ready, and we won't have it advertised, well, we could advertise right now, but.
Yeah.
But in theory, we wouldn't have anything necessary for the public to hear. And then we'd be right back to kind of where we were last.
If we could craft a well-versed, uh, to the B A C members, saying that we're going to have a public hearing, finalize the budget on the seventeenth or nineteenth, whatever that date is. And as a result of that, you will be getting your books before October second. And that will, you know, so that they're not, they don't, they understand that they're not gonna get books at the public hearing.
Right.
And somehow we say, this, this isn't the appropriate time anyways, to be down and doing your B A C work at the public hearing. Save that effort for the B A C meetings.
Right.
Somehow to do that, we could get out of this, we, we wouldn't be pushed to get the books together by the public hearing, correct?
That's right.
Yeah.
Although we would tentatively have them complete, it's just that that public purpose of, to me, the purpose of that public hearing is not to be the first B A C meeting.
Right there.
And that's what we just need to make.
Either, you know, not briefly, they don't need to be here, we're certainly gonna be ready. So, probably be ready the next week to pick, I think, they can just pick it up at their leisure, essentially, office.
But when you're advertising for the public hearing.
They can come and say, well.
Here, when you're advertising for the public hearing, you are advertising a document.
Yeah.
So the question is, well. We need to have a document to bring to public hearing, and we will.
If you do it on the nineteenth schedule, then in theory, that would be done, we'd make final changes and we could. Within the seven days, have a document of somebody required to to give to them.
Yes.
Um, the only thing, based on what we're looking at right now, the only thing I would ask, keeping in mind of what Mr. Clark said. Would we also do like we did last year where we had the public hearing and then we also had a special session of the commissioners, in case you did wanna make a change after the public hearing? Cause otherwise, you wouldn't have enough chance at it until October third, which would be the day that we'd have to get the books together.
I almost remember last year, though, we didn't, we, we didn't have time enough to get the proposed budget.
So what, what happened basically was that we got to that, you had the last meeting of commission, but we never really did a wrap-up or anything, so each, we went through with each department. But there wasn't that wrap-up for you to say, let's make this change, let's make that change, plus, we didn't have the spreadsheet for you at that point either. So, so you didn't even know what percentage you were sending to them at that time, which hopefully we'll be able to just do all that this year, so that. When you went into it, you basically had your budget, but you hadn't taken any official action to say, this is our budget that we're now turning over to the B A C.
Beyond that, Michael, didn't we, after the public hearing, sat here and made physical changes to that proposed budget?
Yeah, we basically had a special.
Yeah, because, and we acknowledge that we should have had a meeting between the last meeting and the public hearing to do that. So, we're gonna avoid this, we're gonna have. But can we take and do a wrap-up on the seventeenth or nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, can we do a wrap-up on the nineteenth, and then following the wrap-up, go to a public hearing?
On the twenty-seventh?
No.
Oh, on the nineteenth.
On the nineteenth. Immediately follow it, now, we, we know what the proposed budget is, but we don't have a document reflecting that, because unless, especially if we make changes, so.
And you wouldn't, and that's gonna be the challenge.
That's good.
You know, so that's why, really, you can't, unless you finalize on like the sixth, you really can't. Do it on the nineteenth and have, have, it'll be like what happened last year, and and that'll be the feeling, it's like we haphazardly threw something together and just gave it to you. And and that's not what I know I wanna do and what Monica wants this year to happen, you know, we wanna make sure that you've made your final decisions as much as you can. Before we hand out a document to people and say, this is kind of what the commission's looking at, looking at for twenty twenty-four.
You know, the nineteenth, I can't.
What is nineteenth?
Have to be.
For the wrap-up?
Yeah, I have to be. At a market.
I'm not so sure why we can do wrap-up after we've finished with, on September sixth. Is there something you people have to do, you and Monica, you and Michael have to do to get us ready for a wrap-up?
It only.
Depends how, that's a different.
That's gonna be the issue, was like, at this point, if there's any major changes or there's additional information, like if you go through with some of these department reviews and you want additional information from the department head before you make a final decision. That's the question, and any of those that we're reviewing on the sixth, that's their one and only chance to give you whatever you want. I mean, basically.
And we know based on history, there are going to be changes.
Most likely.
There, yeah, it always is, I mean, we. I put the cabinet up, you know, you know, wish for the moon.
I mean, we, to answer your question, yeah, we could turn around and then have a document to send out for public hearing. You know, it would take extra time on that day, and or day period, couple day period, but it really does get down to. If those first three sessions, something happens and you can't get everything done, then, then you're kind of. You put yourself into a corner, I guess, at that point.
When you say official action, at some point, we acknowledge the fact that we have a proposed budget for B A C, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's nothing in statute said that you have to take a vote that this is the proposed budget, at some point, you give a proposed budget to B A C, you give a, you know. At some point, you give a proposed budget to BAC, you give a, you know, anything. I'm just thinking that. I, that we, we're going to, as we go through, and remember, we've always done this, that we never vote on on the proposed budget. We always, by by general consensus, there's never a vote, we don't take votes until after it comes back to us in finished form, and then we vote on, remember that? We don't, when the cabinet comes in and says, I'd like to have a hundred thousand, we say, no, we're only gonna give you eighty, we all agree upon that. By general consensus, we only give eighty, we don't vote specifically on that. So my point is, is that by the time we get to the last wrap-up, Michael.
September sixth.
On September sixth, we've basically decided by general consensus what that's going to look like. And at that point, we don't need to do a wrap-up, you know?
Yeah, so that wrap-up, it depends how, you won't know that till. To me, that September nineteenth meeting possibly go into the sixth. But we don't know that today.
Into the nineteenth, yeah, so the September sixth could go into the nineteenth, potentially.
No, I'm saying that.
He's trying to eliminate the nineteenth.
Yeah, no, I get, I get what you're saying, we'll eliminate the nineteenth.
Yeah.
And I am, too, because if we don't have to take official action to wrap up and to vote on the proposed budget, and by the time we get done with the annual control officer's budget, which is the last one we consider, by general consensus, we have developed a proposed budget.
Well, no, what what we, what we did is, we have, we take action that this is the.
No.
Oh, we don't do that till the public hearing?
Uh, do, back double check if you want, but we never really took a vote on the proposed budget. We, that's by general consensus, that we send, we we agree on what those numbers are gonna be, we send it to the BAC in that form. And we don't really take votes until it comes back to us, we vote by, we can either vote by the budget as a whole or by a line item if we want. But the cabinet, is that the way you remember it, Michael?
I mean, obviously, only had last year's, last year's, I put on the agendas, we had a special meeting, so you would take some type of action, even if it was, I don't remember if you took us this vote, to be honest with you, but I know you had the discussion to say, this is now, with any changes that might have been made at the public hearing, or up to the public hearing, this is what we're gonna give to the BAC. And then you told Monica and I to get it to them ASAP. You know, that just gets back into, again, well, what happens if there is a change after those dates? You know, you built nothing in there at this point to, unless you do include after the public hearing, another session for the commission to meet to, even if it's by general consensus, like, if you did want to make changes after, let's say, the public hearing on the twenty-seventh. You didn't want to make changes, and you had a special meeting of the commission, then you could make whatever final changes you wanted, at that point, you still meet your October.
But, Paul, if we met on the sixth, as it says, and if, at the end of that, by general consensus, we were comfortable with what we were gonna propose, and something happened that we need to meet on the nineteenth, you're not available, and Joe and I are gonna have to take care of it.
Yeah.
Because if we don't have to meet.
Yeah.
Then we don't meet at all.
That's right.
So, why don't we, why don't we make the nineteenth very tentative, based upon where we are and what's going on at the time? Is that possible?
So, all I would do is move that department wrap-up and public.
Yeah.
Operation to the sixth, and then the nineteenth.
Leave that as whole open for.
Yeah.
Tensive.
Tensive, right, yeah, leave the nineteen tentative, and.
Yeah.
Whatever that is.
Yeah, but the rest of this makes sense.
Whatever this is, be a specific issue, and you would know about that, because you.
Because I was here before.
But we're still gonna do the public hearing on the twenty-seventh, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, Michael?
Yeah, yeah, and did you want to have anything happen to the public hearing, or just a public hearing and whatever happens, what you're setting anyway?
Well, I'm hoping by that point, we we have, pretty much, by general consensus, decided what we're gonna send to BAC.
No, but his question is, should we advertise?
Yeah.
We we should have, on the twenty-seventh, on that agenda, you know, any possible change, you know, something to allow us to make changes.
Say, we serve a special meeting?
Yes.
Well, I think, you can have it listed as a special meeting, we could.
Should be a special meeting, and the first item should be.
The special meeting opens and closes within thirty seconds, it closes, opens and closes. Right, and I I think that politically, too, that shows then, that if you want to comment to us, and we, and we take that comment, we want to make changes based upon the comment, this is where we do it, so you, I mean, this is a special meeting, first agenda items, public hearing, second agenda item is finalizing the proposed budget.
Exactly. Yes, that makes sense.
On top of that, it gives us a better reason for coming, because if we have a two-minute public hearing, nobody shows up, it's kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, wasted time to shave, you know? And again, as long as we let the BAC know that.
Yeah.
There's not gonna be. Yeah, yeah, I'll leave it up to you, like, you wanna broach that, but I I think somehow we can. Because they can get together through email to figure out their schedule, that's one of the things they kind of do. Well, they never did stay that night in both, the GM was, that was always the first meeting?
Yeah. They just, oh, okay.
I mean, I think, I know last year, we kind of recommended dates, which was consistent with what it did.
He proposed it, yeah.
But, yeah, they didn't take any, didn't do anything until it actually.
That's, that's the night they were here, the public meeting, they didn't take any action.
No, because, and that was part of the discussion, too, was, you know, are we supposed to be calling your meetings for you? Or were you supposed to, you know, basically have called the meeting and told us when that meeting was? So, I mean, once we get the commission organized, I guess, because that's the other thing in here, too. Last year, you had the Congress system in August, so I didn't change that, I just set the date when you decide how that's gonna be around the first of August.
Yeah. Um, so, so, like, sometime in July, we'll just need to know, each of us will have to know.
What changes are our.
You know, who's, who's up and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll need to give you a date of when we're gonna have our caucus.
Yeah.
Of course, this has always been a sore spot with me, is it, it's almost become incumbent upon the three commissioners to go find candidates to represent the BAC.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I'm saying, this is the people's committee, not the commissioners' committee, and I don't know.
I don't know how else you could do it.
I don't either, but it's just, it's almost like chicken watching the handles, it's like, well, I'm going to find somebody that supports my budget, you know?
Well, but we're working on that. I don't know, like, yeah, we're, we're, I see what you're saying, we're already in the budget before we choose a person, you know?
That doesn't matter. There's no difference, I'll find somebody who supports my office, and that I can perhaps influence, and I hope that they'll support the BAC, which is the fox watching the handles.
I think I have one I need, we'll update that, and send it back to you, and then we'll get those letters out to the other people with third-party stuff, so.
And you'll let us know sometime?
Yeah, I mean, I started breaking that list down this past week, so I'm, yeah, we'll get that fixed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can we take a break?
Yeah, or, well.
We won't, a second, a second before we take a break.
Yeah, no. So, are they here?
Uh, yes.
No, yeah. We break here.
Uh, well, let's take a vote. Let's take.
I don't want to, that is, and then take a break.
No, no, we just won't go in, we'll have to vote, take a break, and then do it.
Vote to return? Vote to a new executive session, and then take your break?
Yeah, that way it'll give you time to tear down, and, right, that's what we did last time. So.
So it's gonna move that we come into the executive session for the, under title one, section four oh five, six D, for union contract negotiations.
Add a short break.
Seconded.
Move that seconded?
No, I.
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 They're called a break.
Yeah.